Good evening, everyone, and welcome tonight to the Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, October the 2nd, 2023, at approximately 7:03 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the roof first, please?
Sure. Macy Brown.
Here.
Ralph Baker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Daniel McDaniel's accent, Rob Powell's accent, but we have a form.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please stand tonight and begin our meeting with prayer led by Jeff Ivey from the Brooklyn Public Church, and followed by Black Williams and Chief Brad Hobbs.
May we pray, everything? Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day, and, Lord, just this wonderful town you blessed us with. We do pray for this meeting, and just pray for everybody involved. Lord, just pray you give us wisdom and every decision to guide this city you want us to guide it. Father, we do thank you for each of these servants, and we pray that you would just bless them and their families and our town in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see it? I think as good a time as any, I'm just going to kind of break rhythm here. I would like to, one, introduce you to our new chief of police, Chief Brad Hobbs, who's here with us tonight. Yeah, remember that was me and Jim Reynolds that stood up first? And these guys, right? Uh, thank you for coming tonight. Well, it's your job, never happen anyway. We're excited about Chief Hobbs to be with us. And just to, so you know, Will Dawson, Chief Dawson is still, uh, he's not the chief. Brad is the chief, make it clear. Uh, but Will's still in town, and I hope he stayed around. He's technically on payroll until November the 1st. So if you get, if you see him, please take a moment and thank him for all of his years of service. And we'll do something a little more formal later for the chief, for Chief Dawson and stuff. So again, thank you, and congratulations, sir. Looking forward to working with you. And warning to the chief, he's already cheating, so we're excited for him. Uh, approval of minutes for September the 5th, 2023, regular city council meeting. I'd ask the councils to consider approving those. Make that motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion in the second?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Yes.
Thank you. Recognitions and acknowledgements. Uh, I don't think we have anybody here telling me we have some folks to speak. Uh, I will remind anybody that didn't sign this, if you want to speak tonight, please let me know or let Daniel know when you should sign this in an appropriate time. Uh, any sports other than we're on our roads? Six, six and oh, looking good, and I don't want to jinx anything, so.
No game Friday night.
No game Friday night? We got to talk football, we're Greenwood, so no game Friday night, got to buy. And I think you said on the radio, go play golf. Go to your local restaurants and have dinner Friday night. So, uh, community reports, Spaceman County Boys and Girls Club, I don't see Kenny here, but I believe he's issue one, or he has one. Uh, SRCA, as always, if you don't see one that's not been turned in, let us know. Daniel, all right? We'll get you answered for any questions you have regarding parks commission. Mr. Bill Steen's here. You have questions for him? Water wastewater commission, uh, I don't see, that Teresa's there, sorry. So all those reports been turned in. Citizen forum at this time, and we do have someone has signed up, uh, Cam Trevino. If you would step up to the mic and say your name and address, and we'll give you five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Kim Trevino. This is my husband, TJ. Um, we don't quite have an address. We built up some property up on Norwood Drive, so we are getting ready to build a new house. And we just wanted some clarification on the fencing ordinance, because we had built a front fence, and we are mostly complete. We're just doing the decorative touches, and I wanted to make sure we were grandfathered in the order.
Okay. I've got a head nod from our building inspector, and this is a gentleman that is pending or asking that ordinance. So you want to, do you have any specific questions, or are you, did he visit with Hunter?
Yes, we just want to make sure that we grandfathered in.
Okay.
Make sure we follow the rules.
Yes, well, thank you so much for that. We don't get that all the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you building any yourself today?
I'm sorry.
Are you building a fence yourself?
Yes.
My address is 615 West.
It's a lot more.
I know, that's right. That's why I'm giving you my.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and you're a new degree, but.
Yes.
I'm embarrassed because I don't know, but I'm just, I should.
We're the property owners that burned down, you know, the property that burned down during the chapter of fire.
Yeah, yeah.
That was our place.
Okay.
So we're finishing up the fence. It's all done, but we're down with cosmetics and stonework or whatnot.
Nice.
We just wanted to clarify that with the grandfather.
Cool.
We were like, let's just go in there.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for asking. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, that's all the signatures I have on that sheet, so we'll go to financial report. Mr. Marsh.
Okay, you should have on your tablets. I gave you two handouts. One of them is a revised key financial data report, and the other is a change to the graphs for the A and P commissions, funding and receipts revenue. The reason is because there was being that six is held up the second, there, I had it closed a couple of days before. We have some significant A and P revenue come in Friday, so those are now in those numbers, and it made a significant difference in the percentage, so we'll get to that in a second. The one that you have on your tablets, we'll start with the city sales and U-Tax revenue. Again, to remind you, our budget is four and a half percent growth cumulative year-to-date. We're at seven point two. That's 2.7% greater than what we budgeted for the city, so it is still coming down as far as what we started at the beginning of the year. Cumulative, I'm thinking it's going to probably end at about 6%. It'll be somewhere between, I would say, projection, you guys budgeted the four and a half. It'll be either five, five and a half, somewhere in there, but I don't, I don't see it, I still see it being a positive cumulative growth. As far as the county sales tax, a little different, we're a little more aggressive on that, 8.5% is what we budgeted. Just to remind you, cumulative growth right now is 6.7%, and that's down 1.8%. Uh, it actually went a little more favorable for us, but 1.8% is negative growth in the county sales tax. Remember, the operational monies, the revenue stream for county sales tax funds the operational departments of the general fund. So we, their revenue stream was looking at an 8% growth. As far as the advertising and promotion, that's the biggest difference you're going to see. I believe on here we have regional, we, for the pages, we had a 6% growth projected, and we had 5.75 up until the amount of money that came in Friday, late, not early, three meters. So we, instead of having a negative quarter percent of decline, we actually have a 7.11% cumulative growth for a 1.1% above budget. So that actually, that's why I gave you the revised sheets. As far as the cash flow is concerned, the net decrease in cash for the month was 641,000. Year-to-date decrease in cash is about a half a million, a little over a half a million, 560,000. The current fund balance for all funds as of September 30th is 16,66,000, and that is a decline or a decrease in our fund balance all in at 4.37%. The reason I gave you that new column to the far right of the key fact, the key financial data is the budgeted amount, just so you don't alarm yourself. Our budget for 2023, our current fund balance, or fund balance at the end of the year, was supposed to be somewhere around 12 million, and that's a 28% decrease from the previous beginning of the balance, or at the end of the year, or beginning of the balance at the beginning of this year. So the negative 4.37 is, it's moving in the right direction, but spending the money that you committed, the spend, just not at a rapid pace as we initially anticipated. And you see that down in the capital expense, the next one, very last. The capital expense improvement actual for 2023 is spent, is 2,61,000. We're under there, the capital will spend 7,600,000. So right now, we're at 26.93% for all departments, capitals this year, and the exclusions are listed under there, so we're not including in that number, um, and what is included in that number. So that's kind of where we stand in a nutshell as far as those key factors, the key refineries factors. There's a couple of things I do want to mention to you. It is October. September is the month that we usually start our budgets, and they are hot and heavy in the process of looking at 2024's budgets. Uh, you're going to be looking at next month setting, or maybe even in our discussions later, setting some dates for some budget reviews. The three Ps are completed, that's police planning and parks. They all have their preliminary budgets done, with the exception of where they're going to go on the salaries, or how that's going to pan out as far as our CPI for our, the colon. That number will be released at the end of this month, and I will also look at it as far as our results, where we stand against the national colon. As far as the budgets are concerned, streets and process water sewer is in the middle of a rate study, and so theirs is being delayed a little bit because we're not sure where that's going to fall, and that's a significant impact to their budget as far as how they're going to be operationally spending. Another thing that we're looking at getting started right now is DHC's health insurance. That's a huge number for us, and we're not, we don't have any response yet. Well, we do. Daniel talked for them today. They still don't have their numbers, but they're going to put a hurry on that. As you know, the later they get that to us, the less time we have to analyze, change, modify, and/or go out and get another quote from somebody else. So we'll be looking at potentially how they can change their coverages, whether that be an up or down, as far as whether we get better or worse, and we're looking for any measures that we can in order to make some cost-effective measures that kind of locks us into a last-minute major decision, and I don't think that's, so like, we're going to get them on the ball. And lastly, we just concluded our field work for our legislative audit. That has been done. We did a kind of an informal, the mayor and I did a informal exit with the auditors while they were here. The formal audit findings, which are nothing, no reportables at all, they actually budgeted 105 hours more than it took them to do the audit. It was one of the quickest audits we've had, as far as their time in the on-premises of doing the field work, so hopefully that's a thing for them to consider in the future. We're getting pretty used to how they do their audits, and your final audit report should be here in about 30 days, where we'll sit down and actually sign up on the responses to the actual supplementals that we were given. And that's pretty much it.
So as a tribute to all good records, you know, that made their, their time here a lot shorter than.
It's good records? I think she quoted two things. The records were very great shape as far as what they needed, but it was also, we tend to know they're coming, they tell us what day they're going to be arriving, and we box everything up that we know they're going to need, and we get it ready. That's standard. We, we've been doing that for years, but now we, all the additional reports that they do, they're generated off of our center point systems. We can do those for them. They come in early, they start getting those things first, general letters, balance sheets, everything that they need for. And, you know, they're not auditing water sewer, that's still going on. They only audit street and general funds. That's the only part of water sewer is done. We have Bill Boyd's group, Dan Bull, if it isn't, you know, just off the 45, probably. So we're still involved in that, and we have contracted and scheduled, and sent documentation to our federal auditors who are coming in and doing the, the single audit on the yard.
Any other questions or comments from the council for Mr. Marsh? Thank you, Tom. I'll echo what he said about having everything ready. I don't do that, but the finance department, Charlie, gets everything ready for those folks, and makes it go a lot easier, so. And they seem happy when they're here? They got you good, son. Uh, moving on, and agenda's addition, agenda additions, council's always nice to hear that we do not have any officially to add, so unless we do.
Yeah, we have one. We have ordinance, uh, 1410, which is our discharge of firearms ordinance.
Firearm discharge ordinance?
Decision's got to.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Is that number 10?
Eleven. We're around with this thing.
Anybody else have one or anything? Okay. Uh, moving on, we begin on old unfinished business. Number one is Councilman Rod Powell, who is absent this evening. He brought forward the alcohol ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 18 dash four, it's the third reading. I can't speak on behalf of it or what was on his, and I don't know if you have, gentlemen have questions and/or concerns regarding it? I mean, we can certainly discuss it without Mr. Powell.
Taking a vote on it.
Right.
It's, uh, the change was made as the motion stated last.
Can you point that out?
Yes, there were two changes made, and we have to shade them in there on page.
Four?
Yes.
So we struck D on page three? And K on four? Struck some language in there?
Move the sidewalks and trails instead of the main street.
Okay.
Put the place within the state of the general fund.
Okay.
That's, I want to keep changing on page six last reading.
I make a motion. We approve this ordinance by title only, the third reading.
Second.
Does the motion in the second? Approved by title only, third reading.
Third on per freeze, my, or, or three?
Third.
Third reading.
Third. Wait, pause for just a second.
All your feet change part of L, section five, it's not highlighted, arms kind of the, it's like a hundred mile grade.
Um, plus?
Four, section L.
Section L?
Yeah. Top. Yep.
Less than 1,000 feet.
Oh, we need to strike that 1,000 feet, right?
Right, correct, 400.
Yes.
Correct.
400 feet's written in, but we do need to strike.
Yes, 1,000 coming out, 400 is fine.
Yes. 400 is written in and green?
Yes.
Well, it's not written on there. All right, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Uh, we'll hear, I say yes.
All right, classified. The mayor's vote. In ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 18 dash zero for establishing and permitting process and privilege permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within a private club within the city of Greenwood. Our business is licensed by the state, and the private club is dealt alcohol beverages, levying permit fees, and it's city sub nominal tax potential, we're aligned 15% of the experience of our annual gross receipts, which are derived there from. Repealing any ordinance, public, statute, and fees for violation of these provisions for other purposes. Um, I do want to say that I did add the section one and renumber it accordingly, because I needed to put the repeal of 18 oh four in there. I failed to let you know that I did that since last.
So only, only were since section one?
Yeah.
Repealing?
It wasn't there before, but it's done this time, because it has to be written up.
Well, then, just for the record, I mean, I know this, normally we get some backlash. Obviously, people realize it's been on the books since April of 18, so it's not anything new, just changed a couple of word verbiage. But they still have to go, whoever files and pays the fucking money and all that, still has to go to the state, so it's not like there's going to be a booze bar or restaurant or a court, and the states do have to approve all that. This is something we've had on the books for five, six years, so before we get drunk on Facebook tonight, it's something that's already on the books.
It's going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good comment. He's actually, if you didn't get that, it has to go to, this is a law that was placed by legislation however many years ago to put it, quote unquote, on the council, on the city council to prove application. And we've been waiting for a lot of yesters here to just kind of brought this to our attention again, so it is, that application can be made, and it's up to ADC to allow that time. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next on the agenda is number two, planning the building, ordinance regulating fences. Good timing.
Mr. Derry, this is the ordinance regulating fences. I have a table, last month, there's some changes. It's on the ninth or the third reading. Again, this is Hunter's ordinance that he's been working on, so I'll turn it over to him, and if you have any questions, he's gentleman of the connection.
Mary Nelson.
Mr. Derry? We took this through planning commission this last go-around, and they made some alternate changes from the changes requested by council at the last council meeting, and those are all highlighted in this ordinance. Uh, direct to page three, they brought a couple of errors in my definitions. I have front yard fence defined as beginning at the rear corner of the house, which is obviously not correct, so I had to change that to read the front corner of the house. Same with the rear yard fence. I just put a lot of them on. Uh, I did add a definition here for side yard fence. Uh, there was no clarification on what deemed, in the instance of a corner lot, you have a side yard, and that's not all that common, but I want to make sure that we have the ability to define that properly if any issue arose. Uh, and then I took out, uh, the section that spoke about corner lots. It was more of a definition that was stuck in a general regulations format, so that was a cleanup. Moving on to page four, the bottom was the grandfather clause is what I'm going to call it, that we requested be added by council last go-around, and I don't think that there was a reason or a need to add an entire clause, other than we can just state that a specific thing will be grandfathered in, from a little bit of research that I did with other, other cities ordinances. So that would be any agricultural fencing that's existing at the time of this ordinance adoption, shall be grandfathered in. Any repairs on that fence within the confines of this ordinance will be allowed, and may, if it exceeds the amount on this ordinance, that would, I guess, a discretion on my part if we want to make them conform to the, to the ordinance or not. I don't know that we would. It really just depends if they're going to replace 400 feet of barbed wire fencing, we would probably want to conform to the ordinance. On page five is the change, section four, item number two, is the change requested by the city planning commission to prohibit all front yard fences, including my TJ, he's right there today. Uh, I don't disagree with it, so this ordinance allows us, allows the planning commission to order the adjustments to issue a variance against this ordinance. So the planning commission thought better just to say none whatsoever. If they wanted to have a front yard fence, they could always come back with a plan and a reason why, and then the planning commission would work adjustments with total on the issue. So I didn't disagree with that. It took some other cleaning up, which is why the corner, corner lot definition was added.
Hunter, I may, I was in that meeting, so a lot of that discussion was headed toward estate-sized lots, I believe, like these folks have in Deer Woods and those places that the front fence is more decorative than anything, so that's allowed us for those folks to come in and talk about.
Yeah, so right now, it just completely prohibits all of it. If someone near one wants to put in a decorative wrought iron fence, or someone on Norwood Drive wants to do the same, they would have to come in and get a variance against that, now the planning commission would work adjustments would take in all the factors of being on the state-sized lot. I just didn't want to worry the ordinance up, we're trying to list this exception and that exception, and there's endless loopholes. It's just easier to have them come in, in my opinion. It's given barbs, and we don't see that very often. So everything underneath, uh, section two there, section four, item two, was struck out, because we're all just talking about, uh, front yard fences and. Do you have a good defense on when the guy from Northern Bay Area comes down once in a while, estate-sized lots more important than his normal lot? That's going to be the board zoning adjustments.
Yeah, when I said that, I didn't mean that they agreed to allow it, they just said it makes sense in their mind for those folks to come. Anybody can ask.
Yeah, yeah, anybody can ask now.
But not until then, but somebody go in.
I'm just saying, I can see those, those residential estates that have the big wrought iron fence everywhere, but, I mean, you know, he'll, maybe if I would have a lot of yard, they're not going to do a lot. Yeah. There wasn't an exception on here that's getting removed, that if you were, if you had an existing simple family home in a commercial or industrial institution, came in across the street, it would allow you to put a front yard fence in, but I don't think that we would want anyone along Center Street if McDonald's came in across and then put a six-foot fence along Center Street, so I just kind of use that for the basis of striking it out.
I remember there were neighborhoods where it was backyard fence or one property on its front door. I actually, in my neighborhood, I got two backyards under my front door, and they're fenced.
That would be a special circumstance.
As long as it's not on my fence, it's, I'm not in trouble, because it's their backdoor fence.
Correct. Uh, page six, section five, uh, that's commercial uses. That was a cleanup error online, didn't see that before. Uh, so it says, A states the commercial fences have to be a maximum height of 96 inches or eight feet, and then B states that when they're across from a residential area, there to be a maximum height of 72. It was conflicting information about in a residential area, you want it to be as tall as possible, and so if we already allow them a maximum eight feet, it's redundant.
Um, I guess. And regarding that, uh, the two diagrams you have there as far as sight and visibility standards?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I mean, since a, uh, you know, a front yard is not, a fence is not going to be allowed, I mean, are, would you pull those things off for, you know, visibility on a control section and a uncontrolled intersection, or would they stay in there?
I would leave that in there, because most people would do that as though that's from the driveway as the front of their house, but most houses have a driveway, they're off to the side, and actually to whichever direction your front door faces, whatever street that is, technically the front. So your driveway could oftentimes be in your side lot lines, and you could put a fence out of your property line, so you still want to maintain these sight standards, sight visibility standards.
The, I guess, the one I was thinking on, uh, where it says uncontrolled intersection, you said you have to have that 50-foot, a 50-foot, uh, visibility triangle? I was thinking just our, our building codes, I mean, R1 in the, uh, I mean, your, your lot width size is 75 feet, right? So I think in a 50-foot is going to be, that's a pretty big, I mean, chunk out of that person's, you know, property.
Yeah, so when you're in an uncontrolled intersection, the purpose of that extra length is so that someone pulling up there doesn't get de-moved. It's to make sure that they have adequate visibility throughout the intersection, in what's uncontrolled. If not, if it is controlled, when you pull through the intersection, you know, obviously it's like four-way stop, you see someone sitting there, you don't need to see as far. These were just standards that were, uh... These were just standards that were, uh, taken from a, from a state website, I forget which.
And I mean, and that's what their state website was saying, that their standard lock width was about 75 feet or, I mean, I thought.
It didn't speak to lock width.
Then, and I guess we don't leave both of them in there then, do we? Just the one?
Well, I'll give up one, it's section five is for commercial and section four is for residential. It's, it's redundant, but. I didn't want someone to flip past one section and get to commercial and then not adhere to it.
Okay.
So a bunch of cleanup and I did make a change that was requested by council and the front yard fence and change is requested by planning commission. You have any further comments?
I've got one. On the, in the title, just let's, we'll make a little comment after ordinance, but also add and for other purposes at the end. That way it covers everything, not just construction. And then also the whereas portion is incomplete. So if you don't find us that, after we're in Arkansas, the regulations of construction placing of fences is necessary or somewhere, it's like that. It just needs to be completed. To serve what everyone wants to try to do. That's, yeah, 2023, of course.
This is all for the further reading?
Yeah, it's not for reading, for presentation, but further reading.
Couldn't know how that works, covered my bases.
That's along the tip reading.
True.
Well thought out.
I make a motion that we adopt this ordinance?
Six.
The motion is second to adopt.
The changes discussed?
Yes.
No, Brown, please, sir.
Ms. Brown made a motion.
I said, and Ralph said yes.
And he did, he did yes on the changes? Or would you, your motion is with the changes, right? Oh, yes, okay, all right, yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Yes.
Frank Warren?
Yes.
No one that's guarding the construction of fences in the city of Cleveland, Arkansas? I'm right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Moving on, still the planning show.
Next item on the agenda is the repeal and replace ordinance 1210 establishing parks commission. This is the, uh, rule in their, uh, in their rules that the planning director serves as an advisor to the commission. And what I'm asking is to allow me to designate a, uh, somebody to take my place so that it wouldn't have to be the planning director to be my appointee. And that way we can trade off if one of us is not here or, or whatever, and it would , uh, make a smoother adjustment to the planning mission. I think that is also one for the third reading.
Questions, knowledge from council?
I, I mean, the parks commission, any problems?
I don't think they've seen it, actually. They've never been approached by anybody.
I talked to them at the commission meeting.
Did you? And I wasn't there?
There's a rule, y'all, y'all are all okay with it?
I don't know why they wouldn't.
Are we sure?
I didn't see that.
Can you? Okay, you're, not trying to, you understand what the, what he's trying to do or just want to do? Okay, just making sure, all right.
I'd like to watch we pass this one, uh, I have only a third reading.
Second.
The motion is second. Title.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Frank Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance, ordinance 12 dash, establishing a park and creating a park.
Thank you.
Next item is the ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance, uh, 06 over the sidewalk regulation ordinance and discussion fees. This is also the third reading, uh, on this ordinance, the color of the one that Hunter has worked real hard on, and so I'll turn it over to Hunter.
I don't remember any changes, uh, other than the couple of, other working changes, not all these. Uh, section two, same page. Do you need to add page numbers to this?
We got them on our.
I printed it from what I had.
You must have added them to your copy. Section two, number one, uh, said, Houston says shall consider the need for sidewalks. I believe Mr. McDaniel requested that, uh, reading required, the need for sidewalks.
I wouldn't make changes if it was wrong or upset.
Are you, are you taking out the need for, or are you saying just add, take out the consider the need for, then just saying require sidewalk?
Shall require sidewalks in conjunction with residential commercial subdivision.
So you're scratching to consider the need for?
Yes, sir. And then on the third page, section six, number five. Remove the distance from six feet to remove as inadequate landscape buffer. And took out the question that I hadn't inserted into that for the purposes of the readings. And then 10, 11, and 12 were all stricken and number 13 was created to pair all three together to read better.
Hey, Hunter, who determines what's added?
I guess that would be myself or do you have to bring these up? Whatever's safe, adequate.
Whatever's within regulations and things?
Yeah.
After you've affirmed.
There were no other changes made.
I don't know what. An engineer or architect didn't determine something that's less adequate than you do. I mean, it becomes subjective.
Is it the buffer regulated on the street side of it also or not?
No.
I thought there was something.
No, this was language that I pulled from what you're talking about. This was about the minor and principal archit materials.
What if somebody put two foot? What do you say?
I guess it would just depend on if it was safe. I mean, if it's on a corner and two foot, and there's no curb or gutter.
What if you had an engineer drawn and say, how determined to be safe?
An engineer draws, then it's on the engineer. That's how every engineer can play, from my experience, go without question what they draw. Make sure that it's adequately installed for their specifications.
Hunter, did you ever find out in your research, the sidewalk being around the area that has always been this way ever since I worked here for a quarter of a century?
I don't know, no.
And then, I mean, we, our sidewalk fund is low funded all the time.
As far as the $50 and the $100?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I don't want to take it hard on the community, but we, we don't have a good revenue source, this is about it.
I don't know if the revenue stream is going to be as big an issue with the introduction of this ordinance, because all new commercial and residential developments and installation of single family homes by themselves will be requiring install sidewalks, whereas previously they, they haven't been, uh, unless you're in, you know, the new subdivision, you have these buildings, you're putting sidewalks in, but.
So when they get the sidewalk in, they won't see any improvement?
I mean, we'll still take the small fee, which we consider more as a payment fee.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
I, I've discussed several different times with Mr. Marsh about trying to find a small percentage of tax to.
Yeah.
To, to put into this little fund so that the city can feel a bit more proactive on installation sidewalks. Hard to, hard to squeeze dollars from everyone else.
I just wondered if you ever researched?
I did not.
Thank you.
I want to jump back into that a bit real quick, just to provide. I don't have any problem with this wording, verbiage, if you will. So when you get a plat that's drawn by an engineer, I mean, you say you have some internal, uh, if it's curb and gutter, if it's high traffic volume street and it's corner lot, I mean, there's a lot of, so if you look at a plat that's drawn and say, okay, this, we need more of a buffer here or this.
My job is to question it, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, instead of wording this thing up as much as it already is, but have all these specs and this specs, and it's this and that, and this and that, the fact that you, I don't have any problem with people in there and say, hey, no, we have to do more out here, but that's okay on this area. I mean, I, I understand there's different definitions of adequate, but the engineer's rendering of the area isn't, if it, is not the final. They have to be known as laws.
And we still have to approve their engineering drawings, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
And I ask them, who makes it?
I mean, I know that's a lot more work you have to go and pick out each of the sidewalks.
It can be, the street department would be meeting with us too. I mean, we'd have our director meeting, everybody would be looking at that, so if one of them has a question or whatever, and in case of a safety, we look at something and say, well, I don't know if that's safer now, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll contact our engineer and get him to look at it too, you know, so. And we, we keep that in our, in our mind, we're not just going blindly letting, letting them do something like that. So that's like, we'll have our waters, should we free everybody in there with the same plat looking at all the.
General, the notice would be sidewalks are installed at the backside of the roadway line unless they want to give us a public easement and then it's gonna be on the other side. So I mean, it's pretty common to be set back a certain distance, so.
I, I was learning in, uh, going back to section two where you said at, at the point where 80% of development is built out, right at the end of two years from the date of final approval, whichever comes first, you know, uh, I was learning is, uh, will that be part of the bonding package too, for them to, you know, cover the, the cost of the sidewalks?
Yeah, the sidewalks are reduced as a, as a portion of the preliminary plat, so it's, it's a part of the subdivision as a whole from the very beginning process, it would be included in that.
And just there on section three, item two, you know, you said when it says payment and loom may be used, and you had a section number, should we add section number 14? Is that what the section you're referring to?
Yes, this was the, uh, the ordinance that was, uh, it was really messy. And section numbers were all back and forth, so I waited until I got everything finalized, so I guess that would need to read section 14.
On the title that says residential, commercial subdivisions, is or wouldn't apply to an individual of building that was dollar general or.
Individuals would be, would be covered under section three. That's gonna be your residential and commercial developments. A lot of people would misconstrue, misconstrue, is that the, uh, definition of development? And it is the development of one partial or more, uh, considered a subdivision. I've tried to differentiate those two.
Set definition in the definition?
Delay development. Definition number two? And subdivision is defined as number eight?
Anything else, gentlemen?
I'd like to watch we approve this ordinance by title only, third reading?
Second.
The motion is second to approve by title only?
With changes.
With changes.
With changes, mate.
Yes.
Put this on third reading, my top, yeah. I'm sorry.
All right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Frank Warren?
Yes.
Pow.
Yes.
The ordinance repealing and replacing rainbow ordinance number 06 dash 24, mainly the ordinance 590, regulating installation of sidewalks for designated circulation systems as part of new street construction, new residential and commercial development, and new residential and commercial subdivision in the city of Cleveland, Arkansas. And it's pending for extension and third reading.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been, had a request from, I guess, I had a request from Councilman Terry to, I'll say exactly what the note said, gentlemen, I'll let Mr. Terry explain it to you later, your, your records, your age, so we can get you home. I asked him if he was talking about me, so, uh, I'm a little late to get to you, so, uh, Mr. Terry, Councilman Terry's asking if we get the council's okay to move number 10 up to number five? That's okay, we'll do that. Mr. Brown, if you don't mind, for, you can present the resolution, which makes all the sense in the world. I want to, oh, by the way, I'm sorry, I meant to do this, before you guys leave, I want to recognize it's true, 54 here tonight, sorry. Uh, I don't have any Joseph or here, what's this young man's name?
Wesley.
Wesley? Uh, for your merit badge, I believe it's for citizenship, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
In the community. So thank you for being here. I can't believe you're getting to leave early, I don't know what that's about.
Homework.
Homework, okay. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate you. Let's give a round of applause for you. Ben thought he was gonna give a speech, he said. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so, uh.
First one's good, number nine.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, number nine, yes, I'm sorry. So what I want to do real, real briefly is, briefly is I can make a comment, ask what I have in my hand, I don't think we've got anybody in the audience with one, but it will provide it to you gentlemen before you leave if you'd like one. I've been visiting, Daniel, are you gonna do that?
I'm gonna get a can of water.
Oh, you're fine, no, I'm here, that's good, yeah, thank you. So I've been visiting with RDOT in regards to what we talked about last month, gentlemen, on the Masonic Lodge, uh, been doing it very diligently and Mr. Jared Wiley, who's kind of the head guy there as far as the engineering goes on our project, and I've given him a couple of scenarios. What, what the councilmen have is a map of their, thank you, Mr. Terry, here it is too, for the crowd, for the audience. This is not, I'm not bearing good news, but I'm bearing facts, I guess, from RDOT, or at least options from RDOT. So the question was from the gentleman from the Masonic Lodge, is that we do our very best to save that building and go around it, if you will, literally, uh, with our connection to the bypass from Main Street. This, this Main Street connection, uh, just kind of lays some history down real quick and not take too much time, was a, a request and a, not a demand, I don't remember Dr. Burton's ever demanding anything, certainly to the city, but it was a request, part of his agreeing to allowing us to go across his property with, with the most easement from, for this new bypass, he wanted to extend Main Street over to the bypass, to have an extension off of Main, just makes all the sense in the world to do it, and we totally agreed with him. So that, RDOT is, has and is planning to do that, uh, extension on their dime. So, but what it did is, as it is with other buildings and or houses across the town, unfortunately, it was taking the, the lot with a straight shot from Main over to the bypass. So at the, the Masonic Lodge members' request, we started, I started visiting with Mr. Wiley to see what could be done. And what you're looking at is a map that he sent me back to avoid the law. Now, this is, this is RDOT's, you gotta remember, these are RDOT standards. And this is them starting at the lights in front of, um, you can see it on the map, but it's right over here where the light is by Mavericks, Mike Candy's building, you know what I'm talking, so if you just came down Main Street, you go straight across, that's where they would begin the construction with, with the right of way for a two lane road, not for a highway, but for a two lane city street. not for a highway, but for a two-lane city street. So, the red line represents the right-of-way to curb, if you will, as Don Kew, Don Kewer here, he would say side walk, which I love that term, so side walk around to get out of, out of the middle of that lodge. It indeed, uh, interferes, to say the least, with, uh, I call it Mike Candy's building, I think Farmers Bank owns it, where his office is, Mavericks Restaurant, which Farmers Bank owns, the next building, which I believe is, is the attorney's office. And then Sharon, yeah, it used to be Sharon Foster, there, and then the house beyond that. And then, and then the house that's next to the lodge, Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
All of that, it, it's, it's ever so slight, slight at the front end, if you will, but it really, you know, the sidewalk, literally, to get away from the building, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of property and/or buildings, or at least portion, partials. So, that, that's what Jared provided me with, that's an option. Obviously, it's not an easy option, it's not a cheap option. You're, you're talking about four or five buildings, and believe me, I'm with, I'm, I'm backing for you, but we had to ask. And there's emails, also in this packet, back and forth from myself and Mr. Wiley. Uh, there's also a picture. This one, if you will, the smaller one, represents not doing anything from the light over to, is it Ash? Oh, right, leaving that at two lane, just like it is, all a little narrow, you know, traffic, traffic comes and goes, it's not the ideal situation, but leaving that, and, and RDOT picking up on the south side of Ash, or, I'm sorry, yeah, south side of Ash, and, and building a, a road back over to the, uh, to, to the bypass, to bypass. So, excluding the other end a little bit, it really doesn't help much, leaving with that, because as you can see, that red line goes, it almost takes the whole building apart and right-of-way. I asked the question that you gentlemen asked me here, and I didn't even say, you know, maybe if it's a city street, the city can consider, the council's consideration. If we build a new street, we have an ordinance right now that if we build a new street, we, the city, we build two, a sidewalk on both sides, decked, lighting, curb and guttering, and all that, and, and, and the width that goes with it. The, the city can change that, I suppose, and do what we want, or do what makes sense to do certain things. And so, there was, I asked, I asked Jared about that, and he said, there's another, there's a little email on here, and I'm not sure where he is, but it's, it's a quick answer, we took the sidewalk out, it really didn't help a whole lot, we still have the curb, and we need, and we have to have the, the berm, I think he refers to.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, there's that. Then I asked Mr. Wiley, after getting all this back, what if RDOT does not mess with this road at all until you get south of your building? We, the city, build, construct, whatever we feel is okay for the city to approve, to get past your building, two-lane road, still some issues, can't just go straight, because I think, I think even then, even our own requirements are going to make us move over some. But it, it makes sense to me, and I'm not an engineer, engineer, so I asked him, I said, if RDOT just picked it up south of your building and then continue on to connect, you know, to make this good for everybody. The response I got back was not the greatest. Uh, I do not believe that it will work out well, but I'll ask our design staff. So, I've not got an official response back from him, I think I did that last week or so. He's not answering me back officially, certainly hasn't had a, a new map or anything, so I, I'm, I'm hoping they're really considering that option. I would say, the council has to know this, and it would be incumbent on the city to build more than what we would have if RDOT did the whole thing, that's, that's a fact. But it would allow a possibility of saving your, your building. That's where we are on it, I'm anxious to hear back from Wiley on it, to see if there is another option. He doesn't give high hopes, but again, he's an engineer, he tells me, he, he says, I understand your plan, I understand what you're trying to do, uh, he's an engineer that lives in Little Rock, and it's not that he doesn't care, but he's done, I think they're doing everything they can to try to figure something out. Uh, I was going to try to have some more answers for you, or at least have an answer to that last question before we back, but, uh, you, you do have one, and Mr. Brown provided a resolution for support on it. And I, and I'm supportive of it, I just want you to know, my only, um, my only issue with this particular resolution is that it, it gives authority to, to our clerk to send this directly to the governor for his response. And that's fine, and, and I think that's not a moral idea to get a response from the governor. My, my only concern is that once we, if we start asking everybody, and, and, and state representatives, and that's what they're there for, to, you know, to chime in and get some support. But I don't want to do anything to slow this project down. RDOT's on a roll, if you will, now, I'm not talking about just, I'm not talking about this extension, I'm talking about the whole project. They're trying to meet some really major deadlines to get this led for bid in November of, of the phase one of the whole project, meeting starting ninety-six, going to Pink Bud, five lane, which includes the extension. Uh, let me give you another example, uh, he did give me a verbal option, which is not in writing anywhere, Jared Wiley. He said, we don't have to do it at all, we won't do it if you don't want us to, and I'm sure they wouldn't, because they wouldn't want to pay for it, and then we could come back and, and address this at a later date. That's an option, without RDOT's input. Now, I will tell you, when he said that, he reminded me, when I say without our input, you can't just bring a two-lane, he didn't say their road, a, their gravel road over to connect to state five-lane bypass. You know, RDOT certainly will have to have something to say about how that works, and obviously. So, there's still a couple of unknowns out there, that's, that's kind of one of them, not much of one, but I think the, the other one more is, how does it look for them to not even begin the construction, or we build over there and then they pick from there on? Is that, is any of that, or all that makes sense? Or not? No. I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to...
It's a lot.
It's a lot. So, I, I, I said all that just to say that I want you to know that we're trying. Uh, we're not ignoring the issue, we're not trying to go around, well, we are trying to go around, literally, but we're trying to figure out a way to do it, with the consideration of what the city would have to pay at the end of the day. I mean, if we just said, forget it, we'll, we'll address it later, I have no idea what the cost would be for the city to, to attach this, uh, this connection to the bypass. I do want to reaffirm that the agreement, although it not, although it not be a contract with the Burgess family, that that is an essential part of the, of the agreement, written intent, letter of intent from the Burgess family, that this, he gets two or three exits off of the main road to his pasture over here, and then, and then we build a connection. I think those were the three or four names from Dr. Burgess. So, that's all I have to say on that. I mean, I'll be glad to answer any questions, or if I can clarify it better than I probably did, I'll do, or try.
Are they converting the Main Street from, I mean, uh, from Center Street down? I mean, is it going to be considered a, uh, a collector, or is it going to be considered a, like a local street?
It'll be a local, once this is built, whether half by us and half by them, or all by them, it'll be turned back over to us for the city street. Now, the top, the title of that, whether, and Jeff's not here, and I don't know, we all probably know more than I do about collectors and things like that, but it, it will return to us, just like Center Street now is ours. It's not, you know, if it was built to say Sanders, and maybe that's what, you know, they don't go out and build a road without making a standard, a state of standing.
I believe it should be a collector's street.
Collector, it makes sense to me, uh, but I don't know, I wouldn't be the one to say that for sure.
Now, I know, is that, if we could, the proposal in that, we would be willing to accept a local street as far as the, you know, the, the width and the right-of-ways, you know, I mean, basically, is that what you have to give us?
Yeah, I, I don't know if that would be a problem, but I would say, yeah, that's no problem, but I know that, that they require a collector to connect with that, I mean, that's an option that the mayor could, could present to Jerry and see.
Jared's real open to anything, even if it's ridiculous.
I like that, yeah.
When I ask you.
The design and building from, uh...
South of buildings.
South of buildings, and in that way, that's already constructed, and they're just connecting the bypass to where you stop. The only difficulty I would see with that would be us obtaining easements ourselves, in Mr. Floyd. I think that would be...
And then there's that, you know, RDOT knows what they do to obtain easements, paying, dealing, whatever they do. And you're right, it would be incumbent on us to, to, to do that.
Yeah, that stretch from, from where the road ends to where they would build, uh, route, you know, we could designate that if they would want it to, they'd be able to look.
Well, if we, if we build it first, yeah, there would be nothing that that one, they could act really safe.
We, and, and I'm, you know, my imagination, and my, my imagination runs wild, but I would, I'm picturing that connection or that change of our street to their highway or to their connection, is that where that trail is? I mean, the property, y'all's property might go back to the trail, is that correct? So, we, if they stayed off of your property, I mean, not that they would have to, but in my mind, that kind of makes sense to put it back there farther from the building. But again, I'm not an engineer.
They, they're partly trying to justify that the mayor or somebody in City Hall doesn't have a conversation with, with RDOT or whoever about this project, and, and that report being one of the major things that we're...
In fact, I've called enough different people, sorry to interrupt you, I've called enough different people, I've get calls from, Daniel knows from some of those, and going, would you please quit calling that office? And, and just talk to me.
Yeah.
If you, when you start dealing with RDOT, you, you can easily talk to ten people in a week, and then they're all trying to get on the same page.
I do want to point out that when the two bridges on Highway ten traveling east are removed to relocate that section of highway, that our main route to get through town is going to be the bypass to Main Street for all school traffic until they build the new bridges and the new stretch of highway completely. So, to reduce that down to a local standard, I think would be, and the study from the city's part,
for just the layers of the amount of traffic that's stretched, you're going to have to maintain for a significant amount of time. Yeah, we don't, and he, he said that, because he, we had to remind me the other day, I'm good old, that he had to remind me that the other day, too, and, and, because I just go through, thinking, okay, it's not that big a deal, it's just a little, it's just a little outlet, well, it's not, it's a big outlet, for the, for the school traffic, everybody. Well, while they're waiting on bridge replacement.
Well, I mean, it's still, they could go, I mean, most of the traffic still could go down to the Coker section, you know, to, uh, I mean, it wouldn't be that much of a rerouting, I mean, sure, the main street would be more convenient.
Sure, but if you looked at the streets all the way long, I mean, that's, uh, it would be the best idea, you know, it might not be, but it could be, it, it's doable, put it that way.
So, I don't, didn't mean to pull all that up necessarily, but I just want to get you some facts, that we're truly working on it, trying to get some, another option, or, yeah, I'm anxious to get the answer to the going south and then to start.
I would like to ask the guys from the lodge, if they have, have we seen any kind of what their appraisal might be yet from the Texas boys? The reason I'm asking is if they come back and say, we'll give you half a million dollars for that, I mean, that's probably enough money to relocate and build something, you know, whatever, I mean, it's not going to be that much.
One of them, one of our members got an email, and, uh, it addressed to Mr. Dan Oliver, but it was to Don Oliver. And it says, oh, this email finds you well, my name is Frank Mendez, and he says he's planning on being on town, in town on Wednesday through Friday, and willing to meet with us about how to vacate a burglary, basically.
Is he with the appraisal people?
He is, he, he is, uh, senior project manager, public sector.
So, he's RDOT's assistant?
Yeah. He, he's not RDOT.
Oh, he's not?
No, he's, he's with the, some company called CLF.
Just a relocation company?
Yeah, relocation company.
Okay.
Contract land stuff. Project manager, public.
Which is not the appraisal company, right? It is? Okay. So, we've talked, we've not, I don't think we've talked to that person, but we've talked, I've, I've agitated Ms. Lori, or is that her name, Lisa?
Lisa Robinson.
Yeah, I, I certainly called around about, about not your particular appraisal, but certainly we kind of got her riled up a little bit, and I'll, because of me doing that, I might can, but you said he's coming this week?
And take great pride in it.
If you don't, if you don't mind, if you don't get an appraisal amount from him, let me know, and, and we can probably prompt that for you. I know I can through RDOT, starting with Jared, who's coming down, we, we can probably get you a quicker response.
Couple of us will try to meet with him.
Sir?
Couple of us will try to meet with him and see what, what the...
What's up? What they got to say, okay. But, I mean, to tempt's point, I, until you know what a possible offer is, and I, I don't know, I'm not trying to...
Like, the person's going to come by mail, they will not do it early.
Okay. And there's a lot to be done, so it's not like they're holding off, and there was, there's forty-one, which I was shocked, I mentioned this last month, there's forty-one property owners, but that this affects, not phase two, phase one, which is just from ninety-six to Pink Bud, forty-one. Now, that doesn't mean they're in the right-of-way of the road, it means they're close enough, it's affecting something. And, because I thought they were mistaken, and he said, no, sir, I'm looking at, it's forty-one, so. There was seventeen finished, Daniel, is that correct?
I believe it's now seven.
Seven out of forty-one, now, that's been a few weeks ago. But truly, I, I'd be interested if you don't get what you need from him, let him know, and we'll, we'll see if we can't get you an appraisal amount or answer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, again, you know, just trying to look at other possible sites near downtown. I mean, I know that, that Mercy is, is moving, you know, I mean, that building, I don't know how much it, you know, would praise or how much they would be willing to sell it for, but that's a, a location still, basically, uh, on the square. I don't know, uh, again, uh, you know, if there's any other possible places, that's the only one that I know of that, you know, just recently has come to mind, um, but...
Is the, sorry, Mr. Brian, is the house back there by you guys that the county owns, is that even close to being big enough for you?
No. Does the city own two lots on Main Street?
Absolutely, yeah, I mentioned that early on. We did, we owned the two lots that, we bought one of them, the gentleman back there, and we acquired one prior to that, so it's just past the rock building that, uh...
Raisin Rose.
Raisin Rose, it's, yeah. And I know it's an empty lot, it's not building.
Yeah, it really don't meet our needs, like, the Fourth of July, uh, everybody can see our building from when they come around the square, and it's easy access, and, you know, in and out. Uh, the fire department sits up there on Main Street, and that blocks all of that piece of property up there.
Oh, for the festival?
Yeah.
I, I totally agree, but, but, sir, and I'm not, there is, you're probably getting ready to see a ball for the Freedom Fest going up Main, in case he's not here tonight, but it's expanding, and there's a lot of discussion about vendors literally going at Main Street and taking them on, and I'm not, that's just food for thought, pardon the pun, literally.
Yeah, food for thought, we like to stay where we're at.
I understand, I understand, and we're doing our best, we're, we're doing our best, we're getting all the options.
And it, and it looks like to me, you know, like you're bringing up, uh, all the school traffic up by side our lodge hall, and, and into Main Street, that's just going to confuse, that's just going to make more congestion downtown.
Well, we're not going to be bringing them up, it's just an option for them to take that route. But, but the whole point of that route is for people to feed off of the interstate, for them to feed on... or to feed off the interstate.
Well, I understand, that's the only option there is, getting to the school and coming up the street there from the lodge hall.
So, well, they continue going that route.
To Mr. King's point there, he's saying, what's the bypass Phase One, is that Phase One ninety-six to Coker, right, that Phase One and that Phase Two?
Phase One is ninety-six to Coker.
Okay, so when that's done, and we've got cars ready to go, we're going to tear out these two bridges, ride your bus, and.
What do you do about two to one?
We have not received an answer in a long time that that road would be shut down. Not my knowledge.
So that, the school traffic we're talking about is just going to be there while these two bridges are being replaced, but.
Yeah, it's not that we think, it's what he was referring to, is when this road was ten closed to traffic, then people are going to be looking for another route, and it won't.
See, it looks like to me that if it would come off Bell Road right by the old Niners Park, that could be moved and bring that in there, and that would bring in the traffic from downtown.
Oddly enough, I'm out here, this has been a few years ago, when everybody started, when all the survey companies, I mean, we had three survey crews in our doc at one time in Greenwood, Arkansas, and all three of them said, that doesn't happen, so they were moving hurriedly, and they were all over the city, they were at Daniel's house, putting flags on the ground, they were, and Daniel called me, said, what in the world? I said, well, I don't, I'm not a survey guy, but they were down here around City Hall one because they're moving this bridge, and they were all over, and so I asked them what they had, I said, what's all the flags I get that you have to go, not just rub, you got to do this to get there? And he was actually surveying what you just said, he was surveying Bell Road to go straight across and connect.
That makes more sense.
And I said, I don't want to do, tell you what your business is, but that's not part of the plan, I'm not saying it's not a good plan, but that's not, and he looked at me, this is a survey team, he looks at me and he goes, well, the good news is, you don't already be surveyed. I said, you're only off a block, you're supposed to be over on Main, you know, extending Main, and he goes, oh, okay, well, and they did that too, obviously. So somewhere in the archives of our doc, they have said, not only have they went all the way, or they just went, oops, we messed up, but I would agree with you to a degree, and it's not a building, but you're also going through the Niners Award and the historical society, so they're going to have something to say. Just like as you should and you do, so, but, and our attorney was drawing it, is that what you're drawing for me as an option? So, yeah, that's an option too, and that's a bug I put in Jared's ear also, I said, why don't you go back and look at, I asked him, I said, why don't you go back and look at that mistake in the survey and see what that looks like, so. I don't think, and Dr. Burgess obviously is no longer with us, his wish was to extend Main because it was back in our master street plan, however, many years ago, it was designed to do that, to go somewhere, nobody knew where it was going to go, but in the scheme of things, if that made sense, if you're able to do it cost-wise and, again, safety buildings and things like that, it's certainly worth the ask, so, because you're going across the same type of territory. The only thing that I would be somewhat interested to see what they would say about that is the distance between that and a new bridge, you know, they're putting three bridges across Doc Burgess, new bridges that aren't even there now, so all that would just have to be looked at and asked, and I'll absolutely ask that question again, so.
One that's just brought to my attention is on Mr. Floyd's property, does it go all the way to the duplexes or whatever there?
I believe so, I haven't looked at that in a while. The house to the west of the lodge, it would be going to twenty, if you couldn't get the twenty, this is probably line over to the back of the duplexes. I don't think there's anything else there.
Well, we're just wondering, you know, it's great, I mean, how much room would that give them over there, you know, from the, from Main Street, you know, westward to that property there?
You know, that, or that, mainly over that property. I literally was over there, you know, I go over there about every, like, it's going to change, but I go over there a lot in my truck, and I've stopped short of driving across your property because I don't want to do that, but if you go over there and you're sitting in the right lane of what is made going between courthouse and buildings, Mavericks and all that, you could literally get two lanes of cars and not hit your building, but you don't have any right of way at all, even for the city, but if you, I want to use that term again, if you side boggle over, just, it's split the difference between Mr. Floyd's house and your lodge, kind of looks simple to me, but I'm not an engineer, now we have waterline, we have all kinds of other issues, but that's, we got that in. But that's my thing, that's why I think it's a good question, that we're, that are a good, I'm waiting on an answer, come back to say, why can't we just extend our road? And then they pick it up, and they may look at me like I'm very. I'm asking these questions, and I'm trying to beg on some of somebody to pay for that too.
But the Floyd property is going to be, they're going to have to leave either way by, if they go straight to it, I mean, if they go straight and the lodge gets taken out, that property is a problem.
I don't remember, and I don't have what we, the very first one we got, you have access to that.
Well, I thought that Mr. Oliver said something last time.
There's some survey markers right over there against that, I see them like, you know.
Yeah, but, and I'm not a surveyor either, but survey flags don't always necessarily represent where the right of way is, or even where the road's going to be, it's just a marker, you know, again, Daniel kind of freaked out on me because he had it in his front yard, and it was a good quarter mile from where it's going to be, well, I think, but, so, uh.
Well, so, we're here for this resolution that he's got, that AC has brought up, and so, just so the gentleman from the Masonic Lodge with myself, you know, that we're trying to do the best we can to help. I mean, just to kind of speed up the process, I don't want to beat a dead horse on that, I'd just like to, I'd like to get this resolution put through, if there needs to be some changes here or not, whatever you.
I don't know, that's the only, that's the only thing that concerns me is if they get, now, now, I'm not saying every time something gets on the governor's desk, she looks at it that day, I mean, I'm sure.
Would you do better than that and leave it out to the governor and send it directly to?
To our lodge, and even the state, I would feel a little uncomfortable, and I'm not trying to take anything away from it, I'll make a call, I'm not the governor's friend, or best buddy in the world, but I know enough people that will get, and I'm sure to judge, maybe not, he saved that one, we can get word to the governor, to the governor's office for help with it, if it's needed for sure, I just would not want to do, you know, Mr. Reynolds, I would not want to do anything to throw monkey wrench in any of the rest of the plans. We have a bond.
And less than a month.
Yeah, the bond has, the bond has to be executed, the total amount of the bond has to be executed right after this goes out, or I can't remember, for a bit, so, now, when it goes out for bid, and I'm scared of the wastewater commission a little bit too, that doesn't mean that everything has to be done, but it means it's planned, it's going out for bid.
So let's strike, shall we, Governor of the State of Arkansas, and the state representatives representing the district?
I think it's fine to leave the representative, I mean, I don't have.
Just take on. Get you to our lodge.
Correct, that's my request.
Strike the governor of the state of Arkansas, let's get out this last part.
And I don't think it diminishes this at all, I think you, I think you've still got a good resolution here that tells you that we are doing our best to do what we do.
I mean, our representative was voted Congressman for the Year, so.
Yeah, yeah, if he can get it up there.
He's the governor out.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, a lot of times it's better that way. That's my suggestion.
Well, I'll make a motion, we pass this resolution with the changes included.
Ready? I have a motion to say.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Reddler?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll, would you gentlemen like, I think you gave me one, we can get all of your copy at some point, right, and I promise you, I'll keep you up to date, I was kind of waiting till I get a little bit more, I really wanted to have that other answer before I got everything to you, but soon as I do.
Can you blow the phone up a little bit or something?
He keeps on, doesn't he?
Well, Charlie should maybe show up, sometimes he'd be for you.
Oh, my gosh, if you can do me a favor, keep Charlie at home, I'm sure.
We've been trying that for fifty years.
Would somebody read the resolution?
Yeah. I'll read it. The resolution is supported agreement with Sonic Lodge, number one three one housing three one one East Ash Street, preserving the current lodge building location with alternate planning for the bypass project and for other purposes. Whereas Charter delivered the tenth eighteen fifty-nine agreement with Sonic Lodge has been an important part of the community for generations, and whereas the city of Greenwood, our doc, whereas the city of Greenwood, our doc, the Arkansas Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Administration have enacted an agreements relief traffic congestion agreement with a phased bypass project including a Main Street extension widening of East Highway Ten, and whereas preconstruction plans for the traffic relief project include removal of certain properties to allow for construction, with the Masonic Lodge located at three one one East Ash Street being among those parcels affected, and whereas the Freemasons of Masonic Lodge one thirty-one have appealed to the city council of Greenwood requesting assistance and support with their desire to undertake alternate planning specifically with the bypass connection at the Main Street extension, so that the current lodge building remains intact, so they can continue to add community value for generations to come, and whereas the city council of the city agreement desires to support this cause by calling on the assistance of our doc to employ alternate planning, so that the Masonic Lodge one three one, the parcel located at three one one East Ash Street is unaffected in its current physical state by any bypass construction, and now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas calls on and implores our doc, the Arkansas Department of Transportation to revisit and revise plans for the Main Street extension portion of the bypass traffic relief project, so that the Masonic Lodge one three one located in three one one East Ash Street will remain unaffected by construction related to the same, and be further resolved upon adoption of this resolution, the city clerk treasuries hereby directions to forward a copy of this resolution to the Arkansas Department of Transportation, to state representatives representing the district of the city of Greenwood, and to file a copy of the center resolution with the Sebastian County Clerk, passed by majority of the city council of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, this fourth day of October twenty twenty-three. So I deleted in my reading it to the governor.
I'd like to stay put.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Tell us who you are, sir.
Jim Reynolds, I live on Ovelet Cell, here in Greenwood, Arkansas. I, the Masonic Lodge, I have nothing against the Masonic Lodge, we have a lot of great leaders in the Masonic Lodge, I'm not here to upset them or anything of that nature, but I think some points ought to be made out while we're making coins. I have two businesses on Main Street, I think an exit off of the bypass relief route would be a good thing coming up Main Street for business. I also think it would be a good thing for schools. Schools don't want to go, they want to go the shortest distance between the points they think, and, Jim, you know, there's going to be a lot of traffic from northwest Arkansas coming to Greenwood, Arkansas, or other places for that matter, and they're not going to come through town until after the game, or before the game, they might come downtown because they want to eat something, but for the most part, they want to get here as quick as possible and leave as quick as possible, and they want to have that option, and I feel that that Main Street tying, whatever you want to call it, would be the best way to do that. So not only does it increase business on Main Street in the downtown area for that matter, you're going to try and get business coming downtown instead of going out by Highway Seventy-One, so I can't see why that would be a problem, except for, you know, taking your building. Now, it all comes back to the point that was made just a moment ago, how much is that building worth? I know there's a lot of sentimental value there, and a lot of sentimental, you know, parents, grandparents, great grandparents, maybe further than that, but we've got to, we've got to understand both sides of this issue, and I think, as a city council, you know, that you try to drive business to downtown, I'm all about downtown, I don't want everything to happen downtown, I understand, you know, the city property that's on Main Street, and part of that property I sold, and that's a great place to be, could it work out? I don't know. If you're willing to give that an option, give it a look and think about it, especially if those prices come in, the same assessments, like, a good price, you got to think about if you've got a brand new building, or, I don't know, Stan Hope at Farmers Bank, they might want to sell those two buildings over there, they might want to pocket that money and take out those buildings on the curb. I don't know what dollars is behind that, but I do want to make the point, Mary, as far as businesses downtown and the traffic that's going to the school, this is a good thing to do.
Thank you, sir. One thing that I was like, maybe some clarification on, since you're here, it was one thing that even if y'all got a fantastic price for your building, is there a risk that the money goes to the, to the state lodge or whatever, and then they decide how much y'all would get back of that, or does it, if there is a sale of the building, do y'all get the total amount of money?
I think the same with Blue Lodge here, not.
There are tons of Blue Lodge.
Okay, though you're not at risk of losing, it's a good point, good question, and that was asked of me today too, which I, I mean, it was cheap, he said something to me, that'd be bad, if you got X amount of dollars and you weren't in charge of it. I don't know how to do that for it.
Yeah, we're in charge of it.
Okay, okay.
We won't say where we're at. I don't hope y'all understand that or not.
I think we do.
It's kind of like if the church burns down, the body is still there, I know that building means tons to these guys, but it's just a building, and you might disagree with me on that, but if our church burned down tomorrow, we'd find a place and go build another, we have to, so that's kind of a comparison there.
I have taken their exact building and put it on our Main Street properties with a parking lot that can join the city-owned property along the rest of Amanda, rest of East Burn, and if it was one big parking lot with the exact same size building that conforms to our building setbacks, it wouldn't fit it.
Where was it at?
On our two lots.
On the, just on Main. But he's talking about, we also have that, hundred years ago, there was a fire station there, between the back of that building and the old city hall, we, the city owned that, not where the city hall was, unfortunately, we sold that years ago, but we do, it curves around, L shapes behind, what is that gentleman's name? No. Daniel, what's the gentleman's name? Louis Harris, thank you. Yes, I'm Louis. And that was, you know, and I know you're looking at me, I know your eyes are saying, we want to stay for you, and I can understand, but, so I'm not going to look at you, so, the idea of a building being there, is the idea of a building being there for you in parking lot to serve your building, but then, when you're not using your parking lot, but also serve downtown, just a thought.
Well, obviously, I said it, I was you guys, because I'm a twenty-year veteran myself, however, I mean, if it can't be prevented, then we just got to hope that we can get a decent compensation for the building and are able to build something elsewhere, I mean, the only, the only reason I say that is, is, I mean, we hope it's there for the next generation of guys that come in and door the lodge, and having a newer house for one hundred and fifty years, they'll not want to leave that lodge, you know, after we're all gone, so, I mean, I can see where we'd be able to do some. So I mean, I can see where we'd be able to do some upgrades and some, you know, whatever if we had to build something there. And we, as far as us as a body, we're just going to try to let guys know, we're trying our best to make sure it's not the end. But I agree, there's a whole lot of people, I mean, wants to get the abuse, get the anger, hate. Why does this guy get preference over this guy?
Sir.
But hopefully it will work out. I, I don't know.
We're working. We're working on it.
But I agree, the extension of Main Street was a pretty good idea. I don't know, Dr. Burdzie, we came up with it, but it's a pretty, as far as the traffic flow and to Mr. Reynolds' point, about getting folks off the bypass and not wanting to come into downtown. I mean, I'd like to think that with bypass, all the jokers that want to boogle will be out of the way. Then it'd be easier to come down Center Street and get to downtown. That's what the plan really is, but I understand what he's saying about getting traffic into downtown. Well, moving to the library stuff, they're probably going to cut that, but it is what it is.
Okay, you want to pursue this, Mr. Reynolds presented this, or this resolution?
Yeah, I want to. I thought we.
We changed. Oh, I'm sorry, did we? We did? Okay, this is my first time, I say. It's my first time.
Did we vote on the resolution, Charles?
Yeah.
Say again.
Did we vote on the resolution? Thank you very much.
I'll be your role now, thank you so much.
Wow.
Yep, it's passed.
Tell me before I say that. All right. Sorry. Moving on. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
We, in your last month, thanks for your help and assistance and this is evidence that you are working for that. Thank you for all of that, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, I don't know where we are since I don't know where we go. Number five. What are, which order commission, Mr. Corrector? Confirmation of alternate member. Ms. Teresa.
I think Charlotte could set something out in your packet. We're asking for you to approve an alternate member to our commission. His name's Christian Jones. He was one raised here in Greenwood. He shut up to one of our meetings and started asking a lot of good questions. And this man indicated he wanted to be involved. He's young, but he's got a lot of credentials behind his name. He's a bachelor's in finance from Uthas, you know, masters in financial economics from East Town State. He and his wife live here in Greenwood, you know, so he grew up here and he wants to be involved, you know. You know how we grew up with water rates and why we have water restrictions and that type of thing. And he said, would you like to be a part of this? As he would. Our alternate Alex, so Kirk went on when we had a member resign. And we find that this is helping us a lot, so give him a chance to kind of follow us. And he has to, has to speed a little bit if we ever have another vacancy. So at this time, I'd like for you to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Thomas Brown Meker, who was the second, I said second.
Well, Mr. Meker likes to throw that, he likes to bring in a second approval. That's right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Meker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Grandwater.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
He knows.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number six, the city clerk, permission to authorize the search of the county district clerk.
County got ahold of me and requested this, it's just matter of procedure. I need the records destroyed, the mayor required to have our approval.
I make a motion to pass this resolution, Mr. Clerk.
Second. Motion in three seconds.
I'll second.
Three seconds. Mr. Meker, do you approve the seconds?
I approve. Yes, yes.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Grandwater?
Yes.
Powell.
Yes. Thank you. Number seven, city clerk ordinance adopting twenty twenty-three mileage. I say mileage every year, trying to get better.
We do this every single year. This is a different, you have to pass this ordinance and get our mileage.
Twenty-three to twenty-four?
Um, yes.
The digit says twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
How far?
Yeah, that should be twenty-four.
This one.
I make a motion to pass this ordinance without time limit.
Motion to second title, my first reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Grandwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And ordinance assessing a five mil tax on real and personal property within the corporate lease of the city of Greenwood Arkansas for the year twenty twenty-four declaring emergency on credit persons.
Make a motion, make spin the rules, make a second, very.
Second. Motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Grandwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Grandwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion to in that version.
Second. Motion to second to that version.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Grandwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes. On behalf of Mr. Daniel, if you know, he's not here, so we can.
Surely, just to clarify, that we didn't speak something through and doing a little ice snow voting on people, that's housekeeping bill, Rick.
Absolutely, we have to, this council has to adopt this order for us to get our revenue at the mileage. And I mean, we need, it's a big. Yeah, well.
Okay, number eight, uh, street department, Mr. Turner is home, I'm assuming not still in the floor, but he called me earlier before the meeting, said he had fallen and he couldn't get up very much. But he is okay, but he is absent this evening, but there's a resolution in front of you to amend budget for generator upgrade. I'm aware of it, I wasn't aware of it, I knew, I knew it got, uh, became higher than we expected, that's all I know.
Happy to talk about it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
It was us that discovered it.
Okay.
According to ordinance zero one twenty, and it's for transparency purposes, uh, mayor's authorized for five thousand dollars on the total project. We received initially in July, an invoice for labor only, just for labor, which flew us in that there was going to be probably some materials and supplies to upgrade the generator so that it would kick on when the power goes off. We had this discussion before during the budget study session, and it's as simple as going in and pulling it forward. But this allows it to be still automatic and still, and the generator serves other purposes too, not just opening doors. So it was something that may have wanted for some time, and this was an unbudgeted item. And it was originally approved for the five thousand dollars for the labor. And then you received almost three thousand dollars more in materials and supplies through just regular purchasing by the actual person who, who worked it, who actually did the repairs and maintenance, which put the total cost at seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. And because it failed to have original consideration, we look at the total product, not component profit. Uh, well, this beats cost of debt, this costs add, we're just afford it in a regular budget. That's not how it works for this very reason, for transparency purposes. So anytime the mayor enacts a, an approval of something that's unbudgeted, that either greater than five thousand, it has to go be reported and approved by you. So that's why this was being necessary. We just got done with our audit and this is one of the things they look for. So we went back and we have to bring it to your attention to get it approved. Now, it is after the fact that all of this has been paid, of the need to make a resolution to approve it.
So the person we hired, did they not give an estimate of what it's going to cost?
We received an invoice of five thousand dollars with the, with the notation that says transfer switching panel installation for electric. Now, we knew that we had to buy the panel, because the panel hadn't been bought yet, this is what we received to do the work. And then we received the invoices for the panel and the electrical supplies with connectors to the generator. And we also received an outlet wiring connector for outside generator project. So the whole project, when it all came together, impacted their budget by seventy-eight hundred bucks.
We, we got to with our streets superintendent, tell everyone he's talking this.
Yes.
It's not two out of three, no, we've met this.
Well, twice for sure. And so I was, I was, and I didn't see an invoice at all until Tom brought it to my attention. I saw the first invoice, I knew it cost, I knew it had, interestingly, cost five thousand dollars for sure. Okay, and that's what I approved. My assumption was, whatever it's worth, was that was a turnkey job.
Yeah.
And then however long, what's the, what's the dates on those two invoices, the difference?
The invoices started seven twenty-four, but the products didn't get here. We didn't get this invoice until after, in August. But that's because they had to ship the, the products. What plued us in was that the gentleman that was doing the labor is the one that went down to the parts warehouse that we haven't counted with and charged it against our account. So that's another issue that we normally find, that this person is an employee through the fire department. So a little bit different than an independent contractor doing that, which we got supplemental finding on before. But all three invoices were for that same project. So that's how we needed to tie it all together and what it really cost to be to get out there. So that's.
For transparency.
The answer to the question, yes. Okay, we've had that discussion. They put me in a bag.
Obviously, thanks for, obviously, headroom is. Let me ask you this, do auditors mind that we go back after the fact?
Oh, yeah.
They're not thrilled about it.
Right, there's a supplemental on that.
And this is not the first time it's happened.
So what, what do auditors do when we vote no?
When we vote? I don't know.
The fire routed out as a.
If they vote no, it's, it's already been paid.
Yeah, well, if we vote no, we might stop this pad.
Well, do understand that if this is not random, this has happened in other departments at other moments.
That goes, that's the pad.
In history. And I'm not going to name names because I don't think it's necessary. But we have had multiple times when we asked for forgiveness with one of these.
Right, well, I think that's what brought it getting that. If somebody gets their legs tied, maybe everybody else.
Maybe, but the legs that you're cutting would be.
But how many times?
Do what you need to do, but I'm just, I'm just saying. I'm sorry.
And how many times is he come back and ask for editing for things this year? Well, I think he's new to the show, honestly, but.
A little overzealous, a little over anxious.
And new, but I'm not sure how the county did their, how it worked. But I will tell you that you have an opportunity the ninth of October, because that's your next quarterly review of the finances and where we are. And if all of the department heads are here, you can read them the riot act about this is, this stops. And if they need to know what, how, what starts that line, I'll be more than happy to fill them in on how we're going to detect that. It's the total project.
Yes, and I mean, I, I, I think as a, as a council here, I mean, I may be speaking out of term, but I think, you know, any reasonable budget request, I, I think, you know, we'd be receptive to. I don't think we said, oh, no, we're, we're going to deny you, you know, another twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever to complete this project, you know. So I, I think that the hesitation or whatever, you know, I think, yeah, needs to say, you know, either it lies for, you know, the total project cost or it doesn't. But I think in most cases, if it's a legitimate expense, it will lie.
And, and it doesn't take the sting out of what you're discussing, I believe me, I completely understand because I'm the guy under the bus here. But I will say, on behalf of this particular project, to my understanding, and I, I get told a lot of different things by a lot of different people, this was in lieu of buying a new, a new generator. That helps your, your thought process. Instead of forty thousand dollars for a generator, you're spending eight hundred or eighty, seventy-five.
Well, the generator wasn't what the issue was. The issue was it being automatically turned on when the power went out. That's what all it did.
But they originally had in their budget, or the thought process was to just get a new and another. To, to do that.
I think the idea was that you were going to tie it into the sewer in the water department, so it would function for all of the buildings. But then you backed that down. This doesn't do that, this just services the street department. For whatever reason, I can agree totally with you, A C, and that is that coming to you beforehand is, we, we, you would have said, probably, sure, go right ahead, great. It's the procedure that gets me into having the right supplemental responses to the audit. Because it's your ordinance that we're not following. And that's what they write itself, and those are supplemental findings. You're in the road, you're on the little lot.
So they're coming next month, and we can quiz them about this, but we think once a month, this needs to be taken care of in the administration. The administration, they'll see them every day, hopefully knows what's going on. This is becoming a pattern and needs to stop. It doesn't need to be up to us, we'll make it once a month, say, are you following our ordinances and laws? Mayor's forenote, this is part of the administration's.
One thing that we could do to help this in the future would be any kind of new employee that's a director, we have an orientation rule. Because that's what we've been, I didn't get necessarily a great orientation because my presence wasn't here. But again, if we could sit down with them and go over some of the things, especially in the finance area, which is what we're audited against, and in the clerk's office, where they say, these are the, the rules that we have to follow. Please, please, we, we just have a formal orientation rule, because that seems to be where the issues arise.
Need to have a new orientation with police chief?
Are you here for that?
Don't spend money that's not budget.
Roger.
Don't sell any vehicles west of Columbus.
Welcome to the party. That's actually.
I've been briefed. Yes, he has.
I've been briefed.
He's been briefed.
We've got some, we've got some supplemental findings on the police.
And I'll apologize to you for other red lights at four o'clock today. I'm doing, that's the first that you do. Okay, quarterly report next month, what time?
Yep, six, isn't it? Six o'clock.
Next Monday.
Next Monday tonight, sorry, on this calendar.
We currently, we have a budget. Did y'all vote on this? I fell asleep again.
No, we haven't voted yet, I guess.
No, that's true. No, I'm.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is there a motion to second?
No, sir.
I make a motion to the, adopt this resolution.
I'll second it, thank you.
Have a motion to second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Meker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Grandwater?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Pass the final ruling.
But in regards to just generators as a whole, I mean, are we, where are we backed up at? We're, we're backed up at city hall, right?
Yes.
We're backed up at the fire department. Now, are this, the water and the, or the.
We're not. I spoke, I spoke to, city hall is not.
City hall is not.
City hall is not.
I think, I remember we talked about it, I know if we, if we were.
We have battery backups.
Four O C systems and their climate backup is well at, I don't know if you know, section two.
I think I was thinking, well, then I get, because I hear when I walk out the door, that's fire department. So city is not.
It was talked about when we bought the fire department generator. I still think it was a good idea, but the, the cost of coming underneath or something, that may have been a little commensurate. Did you hear, we had the conversation? Sorry, you hear it, did you?
They tested, but when it's testing, it's. No, it's, every so often, I think it comes on on that.
Like Wednesday or something like that, it's a certain.
I used to, I used to be using it as barbecue.
Everyone says, let it come.
Everyone wants to do it.
Should be both of them, but our other generators are generating, we can't get to the service early morning, people come fix it. So it hasn't been working in a couple of months, or they're trying to fix it. It's just, uh, it's not a good product.
And so our street department has backup generation, we're just discussing that. And you're saying that the, the water distribution up there, they have their own backup generation now too?
Yes, I'm not yet.
Yes, I'm not yet. Water distribution had a project to add on the building this year and incorporated that. Turners looking at a different structure. What kind of whole wall?
Well, we still don't have a water distribution.
But it's a budget item. It's hopefully home away.
Not, not a good one.
We've got these stations, the pump, some pump stations, lift stations.
Yeah, we are currently, we have the three that we purchased this year, two of them. We're still waiting on some order. And I don't know if we're going to get them this year or not. We're two different lift stations. We're trying to put them in our most crucial locations. And I know water distribution has some pump stations that they have added some to in the past couple of years. So that's something I'm incorporating into my budget year after year to kind of get all of our locations on the backup.
Plants, that way?
Yeah, you got plants, the bar plant and west bar plant, both that backup.
Well, I guess what I guess when we bring it up at the finance board or what I was thinking, yeah, that at our crucial spots, I think really at City Hall, we need to look at that again, you know, as far as getting backup generation here. Because I mean, if it's a, an ice storm or, or, you know, just a bad tornado or whatever, you know, I think everybody's going to look to the city for, you know, for help. And I think that, you know, we should, you know, have our, like I said, our critical spots, station City Hall, you know, backed up with the generation.
All right. We are, I believe, on ten.
Yeah.
This is only fourteen dash ten. Firearm discharge, the discussion. Yeah, so.
Hardwood?
Yeah, so what I'm looking at is on page two, section four, uh, section B.
Oh, it's on your tablets.
Yeah. It looks at section four.
Me?
Yeah. So a couple of things, I mean, it's. I would like, it's possibly some, some clarification. Number one is the city cannot say no hunting should happen. So I like the words no hunting to be strictly from that section B. And I like to discuss the three hundred yards. I'd like to discuss whether or not we can make that consistent with what game and fish regulations are. A hundred and fifty yards for firearm and fifty yards for archery. Can you go back just for a second? I'm just now got to break and say, what did, what did you say that the city?
It's not B. It says in residential areas, there's no hunting shall be permitted.
Yeah, so the game and fish commission is the only end in state can regulate hunting. And I think that's about it.
So we can just remove no hunting.
Wait a minute. Let me stop right there. Can we leave that in there and reference the state game and fish amendment? Because I'm certain we got a lot of hunting in the residential areas. We did.
Yes, we did. We, we, we just make it a minimum yard distance for fire. So a hundred and fifty yards with a firearm or fifty yards with a, with a bow and arrow with the owner's permission. So if you own the property, you don't have to have any permission to, off your back porch if you want to.
With a arrow or a firearm, Florida law available, a hundred and fifty yards, can you shoot off your back porch?
Yeah, firearm, a hundred and fifty yards is, and archery's fifty yards.
I said it really real quiet. I'm going to say it loud. Really?
Well, you can't really shoot off your back porch because that's within a hundred and fifty yards of an occupied building, which is your house.
Yeah, unless you have any permission. Yeah, so that's what, that's what our regulation says. Is hunters using firearms within a hundred and fifty yards of a residence or using archery equipment within fifty yards of residence must have written permission from the owner or occupant of that residence. So you could literally set them on your back porch in your own house.
Yeah.
Wrap yourself in a, or you wouldn't have to, but you could shoot within a hundred and fifty yards of your own house within the city limits with a firearm.
Yeah.
Caliber restriction. No, but if you look at A above, I mean, those two things are conflicting anyway. Where we allow people to shoot on twenty acres, twenty acres from side to side is two hundred and twenty yards. So to the left of it is a hundred and ten yards, to the right of it is a hundred and ten yards. So you just conflicted A and B. I put three hundred yards in section B.
The open timberland properties versus residential sites are more difficult to prosecute there.
Yeah, so this is A and X after two thousand and one. The reason I'm bringing this up is I, I, I get tons of phone calls, people, gee, you should be here with us.
I don't know if cities have had the, what do you call, we heard of, sure.
So-called, right, so we, so you say that we should be in compliance with what, what you referenced there?
Well, you can, you can be more restrictive. You just can't be less restrictive.
Right.
However, the no hunting part has to come out. You can't do that restriction. You can't, you can't, you can't restrict, restrict them from, restrict them from discharging firearm. And archery weapons, maybe give them some shots, most of the things that you get on the street.
Read this. Well, get this thing was to get the hundred and fifteen. That's the problem. Shoot off your back porch.
All hunters using firearms within a hundred and fifty yards of residents, the yards nothing, dry resident. Or using archery equipment within fifty yards of residents must have written permission from the owner or occupant of that residence.
Put it on the agenda, production committee, put it on the business.
Let's do that. We can, you want to be on what part?
I just wanted to give it almost.
I'll add a link next to it.
Yeah, so somebody on their back porch, this house with a hundred and fifty yards, you ask the neighbor to shoot from your back porch.
That's right. If you're within a hundred and fifty yards.
Maybe somebody else do it from the end. Question, I'm all about shooting from the back porch.
See if you got a, a last.
I'd agree that we give a pardon, pardon to that until next month, so we can study and have the city tie it to the board. I think there's some statues that we, statues we might need to look at. I think you'll just paint it over your box and put yours without. I understand here was, it makes probably sense, but you kind of like the fence issue, if you allow it in one area.
Be allowed in this area, you know, downtown Greenwood. I think we need to study.
Uh, which I was more prepared with tonight. I was trying to look at the city board real quick, but I'd like to. Before I make an educated guess, I'd really like to get with the city.
Well, luckily, most of our houses that are residential area are pretty crowded together, so it'd be hard to get a bunch of permission from everybody.
Right, and if you go out on highway ten or, or the middle of town, a lot, there's a lot of woods in areas. It probably makes sense to, to get a hunt, kind of, uh, limit the population, I guess.
It's not just hunting. I mean, people that want to shoot their hose.
Right.
But that's fifty yards.
Yeah.
Football field and a half. That's, that's a lot of property.
I mean, it would take like, for instance, my, my house, who's up like three, three hundred acres, but that's insane.
Westmore.
Not, maybe Westmore probably.
And there was talk about it, they're off the baskets on top of the hill, or whatever. I know Dean used to be up there, maybe he still is, I know he lived there before. There was somebody wanting to shoot up there.
Mr. Millen?
Yeah.
Or if you're probably maxed out, chat days or something like, or something like that, or.
Fire away.
Okay, we're going to place it on next month's agenda.
We got.
Okay, I think that's all the agenda. I have a few items I need to talk with you or make you aware of before we do that. I'm going to do it real quick. You know, mine, uh, Bob, was he here? Bob Purvis? I saw him. Uh, Chamber, I don't have it out here. We got adopted sign, Jeff brought in adopted sign, adopted spot, sign in there, it's laying on my conference table. So that's kind of important. Just trying to get that going.
Thank you.
Yeah, someone, uh, you brought the, I think, Mr. Brown, along with Bob Purvis, I'm going to kind of help ramrodd that out. Good idea. We're going to do another city employee trash pickup very soon. I've noticed for whatever reason, all through town, just a lot of, a lot of trash. Some of it's been mowed. Uh, I had an issue with, anyway, I'll go there. But we're going to try to do that pretty soon. If anybody wants to get involved, Danielle will probably see some of the argument. So here's the new sign.
Good job, Dana.
Nice.
Round three.
Looks good.
Bob Purvis looks good.
Did you adopt this one?
Stuart told me it was for Bell Park, and I said, you're full of.
He didn't say that.
He asked for Zachary Park.
He announced that today.
See, well, I got somebody remembers something back then. We asked for Zachary Park.
He did.
Well, that's Westmore.
It's as big as his room.
It's Westmore.
I'm back there. That's like a, yeah, big as a tree.
Four cars living there all year.
I told him we'd take Zachary Park, and Bob Purvis said, great. So I know we got Bell.
True. What's the other, nineteen eighty-nine? Is it nineteen eighty-nine? The other?
You get in.
We got this. We've got, our city attorney here is, uh, we've, what did we do? What did we send? Mr. Steve Lewis in California. We've, we've.
You enter the order of proclamation of divvying property.
Yes.
Uh, he owns Center Street, Sorkrath, Sorkrath and, and the property. The jointing property over on Denver Street. So at your direction, we give it forward and give a vital into that property and enforce that certain port.
The attorney, Esther Flummer called me one day. Congratulations, mayor. You can now go in there and start sledgehammering that building down. I don't know. Not that confident, but I, I do not have an issue, and I think, I think it's, we would be doing Mr. Lewis a favor if we tore down the house on, on Denver for sure, that old rock house. We don't know where it is. It's horrible. It's, it's a.
Behind all the trees.
Behind all the trees. Kids get in there. It's, it's really bad. So there's that, and then, and then the building, as he mentioned. But what, what I have not done is said yet, I'm getting ready to, I think, with your thoughts about applying a lien to the city property. We have been mowing, we either have been mowing, the street department has been mowing it many times. What's the current amount, Tom, do you know, that is owed?
No, I don't.
I, I, my goal in all of this was to keep it millions.
That's it.
Very important.
It'll fund the street extension.
You know.
I've got all the invoices.
Okay, so we have a substantial amount. Uh, we've, we've hired it out a couple of times. I, I told the street department, I hate using the street department to do such things because they've got better things to do. But that is, as we all know, that's a big part of our town right there, and I hate the fact of what it looks like, so we keep it mowed. Uh, and I think we hired twice, and currently the street department is doing it. So, uh, but I think we're at a point where he, he is, and Mr. Lewis did not respond to that.
No, he did not.
We, and he had ten days and we got nothing. So we kind of joke a little back, a little back and forth. Every time I yell, here, a helicopter, I'm thinking it's Mr. Lewis flying into California. I don't know the man. I've talked to him on the phone. Uh, it, it never goes anywhere. There are people interested in that building. Again, there seems to be somebody comes along every so often. He's never interested in buying or selling it or leasing it to whoever wants it for, for, for a good price, a reasonable price. So I'm ready to kind of start poking the bear a little bit, if you guys are.
Yes.
With me?
Yes.
All right, we got our backing by our, our city attorney.
Yes.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes, sir. I reached out to three or four individuals to give us a quote to tear down the, uh, the rock house and a couple of structures on that particular property. I've only got one price back as of right now, and that was nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
For that house?
That's the price to go from that.
They're all should be together.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
But I ask, have we mowed that property just to, to want to say?
I don't think, do you know, Danielle, have you mowed that one?
I, I, I think so.
It's been a long time.
Yes, it's been mowed, and it's been a while.
Our main, our main objective is the Sorkrath building, which sits in the center of town.
And I was just saying, we've been following that.
So we have the street department, you put a price on that?
Well, it helps us in that.
Okay, good. Well, I think if it looks bad, then you get a whole lot of negative vibes from the cities. Ultimately, people will start complaining, really folks are good about complaining.
They do.
Right.
I just, I understand where you're coming from, but we.
He doesn't care.
He won't care.
He doesn't care.
He's not going to pass for mowed either. Lean early on.
One day.
Huh?
You will one day.
Person advising him.
Person advising.
Person advising.
So I think I got the answer.
Yeah, fire away. I like that shit.
Okay. Uh, yes, just don't tell me.
Fire trading?
Uh, Buddy's here. You want to, you want to, yes, sir?
I have, I have had a building torn down because it's a safety hazard. It's not, it's not being cared for. And there's rooms and there's kids being in there. There's hazards. There's, there's a chance that kids could get into any harm. And they're not taking the, uh, safety measures. We have one of the building down by the park.
We, we need the police department?
Yes, sir. Back when we had animal control, we had to see a, a code. Basically, we had to send them the letters, wait for them to respond back, send them the letters, wait for them to respond back. We did it in front of the judge, and as Jeff Park was in the judge's time, but I would assume that it'd be the same.
We've, we've done that process.
Yes, sir. I would think that it'd be better to go through a health hazard than it would be as a site, uh, for the city to try to save.
That's the reason for that.
And that, that was the basis for the condemnation.
Yeah. And, and the big, but the other building is really the same. I mean, it, it does look good. I mean, if somebody didn't know any better, they'd go through and it is mowed, and, and there's no, of course, there's never a car there. But one might think, well, there really is something going on in there.
There are windows on.
From the, unless you get close, every window in the place. I, I agree. So that's, okay, we'll get with you. Oh, it's walled. Uh, this, this is a kind of commercial, not just for two fifty-one or East Village, but there's a, there is a.
Parade of homes.
Parade of homes, October sixth through the fifteenth, thirty-two locations, including alma force, men, finanza, Van Duren, Hackett, Vaca, Coca-Cola, and our very own East Village, and another out on Mount Harmony, I think, two locations in Greenwood. So that's, that's good for Greenwood, along with all these other, uh, communities. I do not have it, but I thought that would be here tonight. So, yeah, Jane, is that next week?
Saturday.
Saturday, is the Chamber golf tournament?
Two men.
Two men's criminal, which means eggs, those meat eggs, right?
No. Two guys hit, that's lawful here. Two guys hit, let's shot away.
Okay. I know nothing about that.
It's on the Chambers website, they.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have written down, I believe. Yep. So, Department reports questions from Council.
Fall festival.
Casey's out. He is, his wife's grandfather passed away, so they're in.
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin for a funeral.
It's open.
But he's got, well, close to a hundred vendors.
I think he's full, is what I've heard.
I hate that term.
I'm sorry. I'm just telling you what I'm.
To me, you just keep taking them, but, but it's going to be, but it's going to, now, first fifty tents are free, those have gone long gone.
We have it in November.
Free.
It is going to be the first Saturday in November.
First Saturday in November, which is the.
Fourth, I think.
Should be a huge event. Please come and participate, be a part of it.
Fourth.
You going to do trees again?
Yeah, trivia voice on Ralph's running.
Okay. What is this?
No, I'm working out there.
Yeah, you are. You're working.
He's leaving.
I guess that goes to Sturgis then, doesn't it?
I've got a lot of deadbeat adults in the scout troop.
Sturgis will have them.
And that would be one.
All righty. All righty.
We'll let you start.
Anything else? There's the department. Yes, ma'am.
We're going to have a sewer study, right, rain study, right, Danny? Love to have some of the council members.
This Wednesday?
Yes. It's not. It's not, great news. I sit in on the water. Sir is gonna sting more.
Literally.
Uh, Department has, do you, Danielle, give your hand up?
Yeah.
Six o'clock, sir.
I have a question, uh, written for, uh, I think, or, uh, it's regarding, I think that there was a, a business complaining out there, I think, on website, you know, I've been told by another business about, you know, being in a floodplain, whether or not you can, you can add on to your building or not. And, uh, and I was thinking that, uh, I guess it was once the clarification, I'm thinking that if your existing building, you know, are a business along the floodplain, now you can make improvements to your existing structure and stuff, it's just, is it just a matter of the, the, going out there?
Go ahead, Mayor, Hunter addressed that specifically and I know exactly the answer, but you, you don't give it.
I know that.
Talk about the.
You're speaking about.
Yes.
Uh, he was proposing to add a new structure, which was an addition on to his existing structure, which would not be allowed per, per ordinance in effect. Uh, it, it prohibits all activity in the floodplain without variance, so that was a quick note. That's, that was the intention of that ordinance.
Wasn't it literally going out the back of the current?
Well, he had two proposals. Uh, he wanted to build buildings to the east of his current structure and he wanted to fill in the, a portion of the ditch behind him, which is a drainage ditch for the purpose of holding tires, uh, to face the deserting neighborhood, which I didn't think was a good idea. But the, the ordinance covered that, and he's, he's not allowed to put any dirt in the floodplain, just like everybody else.
And this is literally in the flood.
Yeah.
Area.
This is.
This is next to the homes.
Ground zero.
Water, ground zero. Same thing.
That wasn't hard to see.
No, but, but if you had an existing structure, like you were alluding to, if they wanted to remodel the interior of that, there's no issue. Now, if they wanted to add a new heating and air system, and we've had a floodplain that's been, uh, developed out there and it's showing that their new heating and air system, their condensers, and then the flood, flood levels, they would have to raise that up about that for safety purposes, but, I mean, they're allowed to remodel the structure, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just wanted to put a page without maybe just going out there.
Yeah, there's some interesting stuff.
Bring it in, I was pushing that live, just to understand.
And, and I'll go record again, I'll, I'll change the subject, I hate to, but food courts, food trucks. This mayor loves food trucks. I love restaurants and I love food trucks. And I welcome them to our city. I think we are doing everything within our power to make them, uh, to make it a good thing for them. At, at the council's request a while back, years ago, or two years, or just maybe not that long ago, let's not have them scattered all over the place and put wherever they want to put them. At the council's request, we started, Hunter started working on the ordinance to get these food courts, uh, legit. I have no power, who puts food court in, I don't care who puts food court in, everybody, they can all put one in. And, but according to some of the same information is that the mayor doesn't like all that. I, I am all in favor of very, I'm even being quoted the same, the opposite, which, at the time I was quoted as that, I was actually quoting someone else, but it doesn't matter. We're, we're doing all, all we can, I know, I know it's been worked on for a long time, we have an ordinance that continues to be, uh, tweaked, if you will, trying to get all this lined up. And I think this one out here is great, I think if Walmart gets, is all that together, that could be great. So just publicly, I like food trucks.
You laughing?
Food.
The mobile food court ordinance is coming up in front of y'all in the coming month.
Anything else for, yes, ma'am?
I will come to your, your defense a little bit, if the city would permit any filling in on the floodplain area and not manage it, the city could lose their status of the flood entrance program and no one could get flooded entrance. And that, and I've come through that in some cities and it's a big issue.
And, and on the same note, floodplain, you know, people have said, if that's our rules, why are we, why are we allowing R-DOT to build a highway in a flood? Plane.
Way.
Way, sorry, floodway. R-DOT does what R-DOT does. We asked if that's possible, they said yes, and they don't ask our permission, but we hope they know what they're doing.
Or their permits and mitigation and those things that go on.
Absolutely. Absolutely, they're not just gonna go start pile, they're, they're right up the kitchen. All right, I'm dragging, should, we did pretty good tonight. You ready?
Just last one, they just have more aesthetic and already involves me, but on the square, it's for, uh, really, uh, Skinner Law Firm. That one light there, it's just an odd, just the way it barely glows compared to all the other lights.
One of the decorative ones?
Yeah, one of the decorative, you know.
You make it over.
Next to Skinner.
It may be.
Yeah, it's kind of out there, I think it's five Skinner's, but it's kind of a.
A few years ago, we went through and had to make, change some, uh.
Valves.
Valves and things, we may have, that may be the issue. Update, Casey's not here, you're, you're seeing a lot of poles go up on the trail?
Yes.
A lot they're getting there, but the promises they're gonna be done, I say promise, they're certainly supposed to all be up in function by the Halloween trip, trail, or trip. Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of metal tree giveaway, we, we have had some requests to do some drops. So we'll, we'll come into town and drop at North Side Church Christ and get Daniel off of it. And, uh, since, cause he said he didn't want to carry him down. So if you hear of any of that, just pass it on to me and we'll catch the drops.
Get you an ad there, okay.
Where are the lights? I read the report after the drop down. From somewhere the hogs. From the current senior citizens to the go for.
No, we're, we're right here behind us. They start here and go to.
Okay.
Or to the back, right? Yeah, yeah, the back of the, I think, I don't know how far back behind the hogs, but they're certainly at that, it was a little like.
Our denture, the denture, the denture, the long past denture.
Yeah, they're in, they're in the.
And he turned around, you can see him.
Yeah, there's at least one or two, maybe seven, or maybe four.
Sir or more?
Are there, okay.
So they're hoping to be lit up by Thanksgiving or so, at least.
On Halloween, I think.
Halloween, right, because that's the, you know, but they want to make sure you get those, they've dug some giant holes.
Did Casey say that twenty-seventh was their deadline?
Uh, September.
October.
Wow, that's close.
I wish, you ought to tell me. And that's, those are electric, not solar, right?
Yep. There was a, there was a pretty hefty, uh, change order, which y'all already approved. Yep. Anything else, Councilman? Oh, thank you, I did have that up here, sorry, thank you very much. Greenwood Lake flag, I, I promised to give you a quote or a price on another plaque to go out at the bridge. Excuse me, I don't have the whole quote. I have approximately, I think it was between seven, what is it, Danielle, seven, eight hundred dollars? Okay, for plaque only. But we do not have a, we, we talked about instead of putting it on a rock, we were gonna put it on a pedestal, like you see on the trail.
Seven fifty, eight hundred without the pole and its.
So let's call it eight hundred for just the plaque and I'm assuming, I mean, I shouldn't assume, the pole and the installation, I would say might be another thousand.
She never got back with me, Danny.
But with your permission or with your blessing, if it's less than five thousand dollars, in my opinion, you're.
Is that just labor or is that included in the cost?
Exactly. The eight hundred is for the plaque, material and labor, but I do not have the quote on the installation.
And pole.
So do you want me to come back?
Could you?
Can we come back?
The rendering of the plaques, we will sit.
Yeah, that's what, it's gonna be very basic, it's gonna have, it's gonna have Catherine Bridge, Buffalo Log, and I say Buffalo Log, dates, and it'll have everybody at this table's name. Everybody, uh.
Needs representative, all elected.
Every, every collective official. And I don't have to, I mean, I don't, we may or may not get it between, I'll, I'll come back and tell you what that other cost is, just so, you know. Sorry, thank you.
Man, I hate to do this, but I have written down here a note, has the fire chief about seventy rescue slash medical incidents on his report.
Seventy medical rescues, what about?
I was just wondering.
That's how many calls we've had this year, I don't recall.
Eleven for the year?
No, I'm sorry, this month.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, we had ninety calls this month.
How many of them were just going out to the same old boy out there, Pink Bud or, uh?
I wish.
Assistant.
No, it's pretty falls, just thing, I'll give you a breakdown.
I don't want a breakdown, I just thought that's a lot for a month, it's empty in thirty days.
Yeah, we're not going to all the calls. I mean, we only go to probably one or two, unless they call us for, uh, uh, here's what's happening a lot, since there's only two ambulances in town or in the county, they'll be outside and they'll have a lady over at Golden Year's Hall, they'll ask us to go help with that. Or they'll be bringing a person home on a transfer and they weigh three hundred fifty pounds and then the two paramedics, they're like, man, so, so much we can do. You know, come help us on, on lift. And so there's a lot of falls, I mean, I, I've got repeat customers around me that they're, someone that everybody here knows that's been to Greenwood for a long time. And they'd say, you better go, go to them, I'm gonna do that, and then if you don't know, I'm not, why don't you go to them? You know, but we got a lot, there's a lot of people, we're, our, our, uh, Democrats are getting older and we're starting to see that in medical calls quite a bit. So I would say we're probably going to, uh, have a more, have, or more emergency calls this year than we ever had. I was telling them, come in six, uh, seven, eight, is where we're at right now, and we were seven seventy-nine last year. So we got three more months, so we're gonna pop that, but year before we were at about eight fifty, that's COVID stuff. But we'll see.
But some of the frequent.
We're kind of doing seventy, we're doing seventy to, twenty, seventy and ninety calls average now.
I was just wondering.
Twelve hundred West Center costs.
Twelve hundred West Center.
A lot of money.
Is that including the sidewalk or what? Oh, I checked.
Well, I just, I felt really mentioned, but I appreciate, uh, City Clark Charlotte's, uh, helping out with the resolution for the Sonic Lodge, excuse me, really, ordered all up and, uh, so I appreciate that.
Quick report on, I don't, did I do this last month on our core meeting with the core? Uh, Chappy, the Colonel and Lieutenant Colonel and Bosman's office and Walmart's office, all here in this maroon to discuss, and I hate just discussing, but you gotta discuss it before you get anything done about flood issues. I know people feel like we're not doing anything to solve those problems and we certainly are reaching out to everybody that we can. And I think we had a really, uh, good meeting with those folks. We've not been able to sit down with core engineers in years and really have a, have a nice conversation and we did that. Hunter's a big part of that, kind of mending that bridge a little bit. So Chappy's looking at theirs property to see what's, could be, uh, stopped up over there and then we're all gonna work together and try to get something solved for, for the flooding issues. Still, we don't know anything about the grant on the real, on the buyout yet. We also had a meeting with R-DOT on, uh, uh, utility relocation, uh, which kind of got Tim, Tim was there and excited, Tim gets a little bit public. But he did, did some questions answered and the fact that they said to us all, it's not that you'll have to have everything done before we put this out for bid, we just have to have a plan to make sure that we're gonna do it. I signed, and I know you're excited about this, especially you, Councilman Terry.
Great.
I signed the paperwork on the new traffic signal that will be installed down here at ninety-six and ten in the future.
Well, I know.
For the bypass, I signed.
We're gonna name it the Tim Terry Signal.
It's gonna be the Tim Terry. So, uh.
The whole plant's only helping traffic. I mean, your traffic relief is about to make the traffic a lot worse.
And flooding a lot worse.
We shall see.
We start with Chelsea.
Proof, proof will be in the, in the highway.
Right.
So I just want you to know that we're working on all these projects, we're not just sitting back on our hands, there's people coming in and talking to us and trying to get things done, so.
On the, on the flood buyout, uh, again, that is, is a person, a street volunteer.
Absolutely, yeah.
They're not required to sell their house.
No, they're not being forced, absolutely. A lot of, a lot of those people do not have any desire to move. Some of them do, how many did you have applicants?
Uh, that are interested?
Yeah.
Nineteen.
Nineteen were interested. And they can change their mind anytime.
I'm sure our God encounters this every single time they.
Absolutely.
So is this something we heard about in a year?
The, the grant? Yeah, what do you, what do you have on that, Hunter?
I have not gotten an update from.
It's been a while. The last time we asked, uh, Tracy, she's like, like, really? It's gonna be a while. I think she told us a year and a half.
Yeah.
Back six months ago, or four months ago.
That's how long it took for it to sign, I think.
But no, yeah, you answered your question, nobody's being forced, and, and they could, they could sign it today and then when the grant is approved, they could go, you know what, I changed my mind, I don't want to leave. I, I did make a kind of a big deal about going over there and redoing some of those roads in that area because they're bad, especially on that back, the worst flooding area. But it makes no sense for me to send crews over there or certainly to overlay it. We're gonna come in there and tear homes down, even if it's five houses, and, and tear up all that. So we're trying to work with those folks and patch as we can. Uh, I'm understanding and I'm impressed so far, we got Jeff versus some new material that's what I call co-mix, but it's hanging on out here at this corner, that's the worst place in town, when the buses come in, and so far, so good, so we'll see how that goes, so.
Mr. Mayor, there was this discussion about a traffic signal at Coker in the new bypass, was there?
Yes, sir.
What about the new mercy that's getting moved out of seventy-one and more?
That only came up, if you remember back when the council approved of one, uh, what did you approve? The one at seventy, they'll do it at seventy-one in center. We have, there were two, there were two requests and it came from the former chief, if you will, originally, and that was brought and the council said, let's go ahead and approve the one at seventy-one in center, which we now have, right? To true traffic signal.
Kind of approved, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, you cut, you broke the tie with that.
I did, I did, yes. And so the other one has not been approved.
That.
It, it is.
Walmart?
Correct.
On seventy-one?
The council would have, you would have to vote to, to, to mine, we, as far as I know, that is not in the workings. Now, I can find that out.
But where I'm getting at is ultimately it's going to better go through town, miss the traffic signal.
Right.
Only bypass gets made.
Right. Now, I will say, so part of that discussion that we, that we had with the utility folks, there were three of them, a lady and two gentlemen, and I asked some pretty, just blank questions, tell me what that light, what that looks like out here? And are you ready? Both that intersection and the one at Pink Bud was a, were both roundabouts during their discussion. And they went from roundabouts to lights at both of them. Somebody in the room said, what makes, what makes a decision to go to, from a roundabout to a traffic light? I don't remember the answer, to be honest, but it's kind of different. The young lady that was here was assured, she was very much, uh, convinced. Well, the paperwork, we put it this way, the paperwork that she had and the maps and all that design, I mean, there's a, there's a lot here, no matter, that's gonna happen down here at ninety-six. Though I, I asked about the one at Coker because in my opinion, even though I'm not a big fan of them either, that's gonna deserve it, that's gonna need a light. And I, I told them, how long will it take for you guys to do a study after you come in there, build a highway to decide? How many accidents does it take?
There's accidents with the traffic signals.
I know, I know. But, so the answer was, she flipped it over and she goes, no, you're getting a light. And I said, really? Cause I was told to mark, we're gonna wait, but they were gonna design it for a light. I'm still kind of convinced she was looking at the design with islands in place and, but, but maybe not a light to me, I don't know, but they.
Is the actual bypass, is it two lane with a turn lane? It's five lane?
Four with a turn. All the way from ninety-six to Co, to Pink Bud and then that diving of ten all the way to seventy-one.
Well, and the roundabouts on those kind of streets.
It could be, they, they, she said they were seriously considered.
Why did they pull the roundabout out?
She didn't really have, well, you were, who was in the room?
If you use the law, they're actually not that bad, they're spinning, you don't have to set their way, well, stupid traffic about this, and then we can't program a road properly, so it's like. And I really don't know, I, I could talk to some of these cities, Conway, Benton, et cetera, and see how many wreck stacks they have those.
Conway continues to put them in.
And that, I mean, so the robbers did not risk by for, uh, auto exit, that he put them in, or they wouldn't, he put them in? I would think.
You got something, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I was gonna tell Tim, I, I was having a discussion with someone the other day about a lot at ninety-six. He said, uh, why don't you get the police down there to direct traffic at, like, seven fifteen in the morning, and you could figure out real quick how that was gonna back up or, or have people go through.
Well, I'll tell you this, it's pretty, it's, it's, there, there's something to be said about the people of our community and surrounding areas, because I don't know how many of y'all been stuck to that traffic, but when they come out from ninety-six, it's an unbelievably cordial, one after another, letting people out of ninety-six. It's amazing how people actually are seen, and it, it just, everybody's bought into that, so it kind of keeps it flowing a little bit.
I can, I can tell you, and, and you won't doubt this, but when I lived out there, just from moving from that side of town to the other side of town, it saves my wife forty minutes a day drive time, every day.
Hundred percent. No question. I've gone out, up the highway to Mount Harmony, down to the floor, I put your bill, come around, take my kids living out there, the best move. I went all the way around.
I have noticed Denver's traffic's picked up, Denver Street. These two is all packed. That light has done something. People will pass it now rather than set to turn left back into Greenwood. And they'll pass through and they get on Denver, because Denver Street traffic's really picked up. That street
That's not, there will be Denver?
Yes. Didn't?
There wasn't one there.
No. Two years ago?
We had a big problem from Barry too, the
Well, that could be, we called it off really bad.
Can we take it, a pocket of brakes and walk around?
We can make the motion to a jury.
I think, I think that's what she was I'm not gonna do it, huh? Have a motion?
I make a motion?
Thank you all.
Yes.